Bill, are we ready? Okay, thank you. Great, everyone, we'll get our meeting started this evening. Thank you. A good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Virginia City Council Chambers. This is a regularly scheduled city council meeting. We'll call this meeting to order. Today's date is Tuesday, September ninth, two thousand twenty-five, and the time is five thirty P. M. Pam, would you please take the roll call?
Johnson?
Here.
Motley?
Here.
Paulson?
Present.
Yandich is absent. Bachschneider?
Here.
Friedleeb?
Here.
Cuffey?
Present. Would everyone please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll move to item four on the agenda, which is the public forum. This is an opportunity, anyone from the audience who'd like to address the council this evening, you're welcome to do so. Please state your name for the record, and welcome to the city council meeting.
I'm Greg Lency. So I'd just like to discuss that grater again since it came up on the agenda. I don't know what else we can say about that. It got voted down numerous times already, and there were good reasons for that, mostly financial, due to our debt that we're going to have coming up in the next year for steam conversions and Sixth Avenue and whatnot. There was good concern amongst the council and citizens spending a half a million dollars on a grater. And that's justified, in my mind. So I just, that's all I want to say about that. The Northland tractor repair is in the old Detroit Diesel building, and they can put a transmission in that grater for less than twenty thousand dollars, and it has a three-year warranty. And they'll look over the grater and see what kind of shape it's into. And I'd also like to expand on what Counselor Motley touched on at one of her meetings for the police consolidation. And I'd like to double down on that and encourage the council to also have St. Louis County Sheriff's Department involved in that discussion, too. They have cities in Minnesota where they cover thirty thousand population in the Sheriff's Department. Mountain Iron pays six hundred thousand dollars for their entire annual budget for the police department, for the Sheriff's Department, and we're at four and a half million dollars. I got it on the, right from their website and their audit last year. Five hundred and eighty-five thousand, exactly. And that covers the purchase of a new car every three years. So it's under six hundred thousand dollars. So they're really killing it over there in every respect. If we need a model, that would be a place to look. And Nashwauk hit the news this morning because they had Atasca County expand their tax base for their ambulance service. So they turned the ambulance service over to the medical facility there. St. Louis County reached out, or Atasca County reached out, and they're going to expand their tax base beyond the city limits to pay for that whole ambulance service. So we need to do the exact same thing here. We need to lobby St. Louis County, get them to expand that tax base out of the city limits of Virginia to cover our ambulance service. If Nashwauk can do it, we should be able to do a similar situation there. If Atasca County's willing to do it, I would think St. Louis County would be willing to do that, too. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lancy. Anyone else like to address the council before we move on? Counselor Motley?
It was just to kind of segue off of him, just random curious. Has Ascension Health ever reached out to the city of Virginia for the ambulance service here?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Let's move to item five on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. The following items will be enacted by one motion unless a counselor or citizen of the city of Virginia requests that the item be considered separately. Item five point one is the approval and corrections of the minutes of the following meetings. Item five point one A, the regular meeting that was held on August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five. Five point one B, the special meeting that was held on August twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five. Item five point one C, the special meeting that was held on October twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five. And item five point one D, the special meeting that was held on September second, two thousand twenty-five. Item five point two is the adoption of Finance Resolution Number two-five dash zero-one-six, the Schedule of Bills. Item five point three is approved pay estimate number fourteen for the Public Safety Center project to Carl Sanderson in the amount of one million eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and six cents. Item five point four, approved pay estimate number sixteen for the Public Safety Center project to Carl Sanderson in the amount of one million, one hundred and ninety-one thousand, twenty-six dollars and eighty cents. And finally, on the consent agenda, item five point five, approve the two A. M. liquor license renewal for Mel's Sports Page. These are the items on the consent agenda that come before the council this evening, looking for council action.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Counselor Johnson moves to approve the consent agenda. Is there support? Support by Counsel Freely. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item six, appearances. There's no one scheduled to appear before the council meeting this evening, so move on to unfinished business, which is item seven. Seven point one, the Masabi Animal Control. Do we have any updates regarding this issue that we've been trying to resolve? Brian, do you have any other information with respect to the Masabi Humane Society?
I don't have any additional information since our last meeting, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Move to item eight, discussion items. Item eight point one is allow the police department to partner with RAD to hold the Fifth Annual Range Recovery Night Out at the Alcott Park on Thursday, September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, from four P. M. to seven P. M. And this has been done in previous years as well.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counsel Johnson. Is there support? By Counsel Paulson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight point two is adopt the resolution authorizing staff to apply for and accept funds from the Department of Iron Range Resources, the D. I. R. R. fiscal two thousand twenty-six commercial redevelopment grant program for the Bohaki Leasing LLC site cleanup.
So moved.
A move to approve by Counsel Motley and supported by Counsel Freely. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight point three, adopt the resolution applying for and accepting funds from the Department of Iron Range Resources and Reappropriation for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-six Public Works Grant Program for the Sixth Avenue and Seventh Street North Reconstruction Project.
Or, I mean, sorry.
Moved by Counsel Freely and supported by?
Or.
Counsel Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight point four, adopt the resolution declaring surplus equipment.
Moved.
Moved to approve by Counsel Paulson. Is there support?
Support.
By Counsel Bachschneider. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight point five, adopt the resolution ordering the repair and/or removal of unsafe structures at three oh seven First Street North in Virginia.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counsel Johnson. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Counsel Bachschneider. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. This is a long, arduous process, and we've come to this point now. Item eight point six, adopt the resolution ordering the repair and/or removal of unsafe structures at seven nineteen Third Street South.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counsel Motley, supported by?
Support.
Counsel Bachschneider. Is there any further discussion? Counsel Paulson?
Oh, sorry.
Okay, a further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight point seven, adopt the resolution approving the liquor license fee beginning January first, two thousand twenty-six. And we did have a public hearing this evening at four thirty. And I'll read it again. At the council meeting here, there was a notice was hereby given by the city council on the city of Virginia that will hold a public meeting Tuesday, September ninth, two thousand twenty-five, at four thirty P. M. at the Virginia City All Council Chambers, three twenty-seven First Street South, relating to a discussion of an increase in licensing fees beginning January one, two thousand twenty-six. All interest parties will may appear at the public meeting and present their views orally and in writing. And we did have the hold of meeting today, and we had three individuals representing different liquor licensing establishments and give their opinion with respect to the proposed liquor fees. And so, as follows, there is a resolution in your packet to consider. There was some discussion of the elected body that was present and to determine where we're going to be at. And present in that was Counsel Motley, Counsel Bachschneider, and myself, and Counsel Paulson. So the resolution is related to the current liquor licenses and the proposed increases. And Pam, our city clerk, has done some comparisons on where other communities charge for their liquor licenses. Many are higher, some are lower. And so this is the proposal that she has brought forth to us for consideration. And we heard from the three individuals that was, were here. They were concerned about the cost associated that was incurring on their establishment based on a variety of reasons, the pressures of insurance and steam conversion and all these other pressures that are brought to bear for them. And this is just another fee that they're going to have to absorb and are looking for us to reconsider. So the off-sale liquor license right now is currently at a hundred and fifty dollars a year. The proposal is to raise that to two hundred and fifty dollars a year. The on-sale liquor currently is at one thousand five hundred dollars. We're proposing that increase to be one thousand eight hundred dollars. On-sale wine, currently it's one hundred dollars per year. We're proposing one hundred and fifty dollars per year. Club licenses, and this is a statutory requirement, two hundred dollars is our current fee. We're requesting that the fee be increased to three hundred dollars, and that's for membership under two hundred people. If the club has a membership of two hundred and one to two to five hundred, the fee would be five hundred dollars a year. And if a membership was five hundred, five oh one to one thousand, then or more than the fee would be six hundred and fifty dollars annually, which we don't have right now. They only charge two hundred dollars. So we're going to, the request is to apply the statutory language and incorporate that into our licensing program. The Sunday liquor license is currently at two hundred dollars. The proposal is to raise it to two hundred and fifty dollars. On-sale three-two liquor, here, one hundred and fifty dollars is the current license. We're proposing two hundred dollars. Off-sale three-point-two is currently twenty-five dollars a year. We're proposing one hundred dollars a year. And the temporary liquor licenses for events are currently at twenty-five dollars per event, and we're requesting a consideration to increase that to fifty dollars. And those are the proposed fees that were read over and discussed at the public hearing at four thirty today. So there's a resolution in your packet. We're here to review the resolution and actually the agenda item says to discuss it as well. So looking for a discussion or motions or actions by the elected body. Counsel Motley?
With half of the council or several of us, I was here, but with some people not present and then hearing some of the concerns of taxpayers, I wouldn't be opposed to having this more as a topic of conversation moved to the committee, the whole, if the council was okay with that. And also having comparisons with Hibbing and Grand Rapids, comparing our fees to theirs. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Pam, when was the last time those fees were increased?
Counsel Johnson, I've been here ten years, and they were the same since two thousand fifteen, and I couldn't tell you when they were raised before that.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I think it's only natural to assume that eventually all of our costs are going to go up. We are sitting in this room regularly debating cuts to budgets, cuts to funding, cuts to cuts to. And the thing that keeps coming up is, well, maybe we need to generate a little revenue. Taking a three hundred dollar increase and increasing the cost of a beer by a penny or two pennies throughout the year is nominal at best. I think it's relevant that these fees go up, and I'd actually like to see us reviewing these fees regularly so that it's not ten years later and it's still the same cost. I don't feel the need to move this on, or excuse me, to have this go back to a committee. I think that the staff have come to us with what they think is appropriate. The research has already been done. It doesn't matter what Grand Rapids or Hibbing does. They're their own entities. They have their own rules. They have their own challenges. So I will make a motion to approve the resolution and approve the truck cost increase, or the fee increases.
Counsel Johnson moves to approve the proposed resolution as proposed. And is there support?
Support.
By Counsel Bachschneider. Is there any further discussion? First over to Counsel Paulson, and then over to Counsel Motley. Counsel Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. So I came in just a few minutes late to the public hearing, so I missed one of the, I believe, bar owners here in town, but was able to hear the other two gentlemen, and those were club members. Is that, they were representing the different clubs? So they were talking directly about the proposed increases to club fees? Is that, am I correct on that?
Yes, one representative from the Virginia Elks Lodge, one thousand three, and the other from the American Legion Post, two thirty-nine.
And then one of the questions was regarding the Sunday license, which got clarified for the Elks Club, gentleman from the Elks Club. But I do feel that since there hasn't been an increase, you know, to the club fees especially, I think it's just a hundred dollars. So hopefully, they would be able to make that up in club revenue with that increased fee. So I'm not sure what the other bar owner, and if that was the one that was maybe expressing frustration with the steam conversion, I totally understand that. And, you know, tax increases, I get that as well. But I would feel comfortable, I mean, that was the three people that came to address the concerns and nothing else in writing or anything. Okay. So I think that if that's the case, I would feel comfortable moving forward with the proposed fee increase. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. It has been moved and supported to adopt the resolution approving the liquor fees for the city of Virginia increases. That's actually included in this resolution. It has been moved and supported. Further discussion? Counsel Motley?
After that public hearing, I did have a chance to speak to our city clerk a little bit more of kind of how the process works on getting these licenses out. And there's quite a bit of city staff time involved just to even get this rolling. And so it's not as simple as it may seem, so there's some involvement by staff time. I'm not against raising the rates, but I do, how many club licenses do we have, Pam? Three? And I think we could all probably maybe agree, or maybe not, that they are not growing in membership, but possibly decreasing in membership, Mr. Mayor. Is that a possibly factual statement or not really?
That was proffered by both club members that there has been a dueling of memberships in both those organizations, yes.
And I feel for both of them, and they're both here speaking at the public hearing. And I would be fine with even doing the club member, or the club license instead of jumping from two to three to even two fifty and not to the full three hundred. But if you're ever amenable, these two, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Motley. I'm a member of both those organizations, so I'm well aware of the, how things work there. And so, yeah, it is true that both of these are, have difficulty increasing the membership fees. But it has been moved and supported to adopt the resolution as proposed in the document that was at the public hearing and as presented to here today. So it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Pam, for all your work on that. We'll move to item eight point eight. Approve the contract with Minnesota North College for medical services at the two thousand twenty-five college football games.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counsel Bachschneider. Is there support?
Support.
By Counsel Motley. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Eight point nine, adopt the resolution to approve the transfer number two from the forum fund to the general fund.
So moved.
It's moved to approve by Counsel Johnson. Is there support?
All support. For discussion.
For support by Counsel Freely, for further discussion. Further discussion, Counsel Freely, be looking for some clarification?
Yeah, some rationale, some clarification as to?
We do this on an annual basis, but for us, for refresher and for the general public certification, Britt, could you give us a breakdown on what this transfer is for?
For the bond we took out for the street projects this year. The money, we got, I think it was nine million dollars in our account. The banks have to take out extra collateral for that dollar amount because it's over the F. D. I. C. amount. So the banks don't usually like to have that much money in there because it costs money for them to take out this extra collateral. We get a much better return on our investment or much better interest if they're going to the market and putting it in a fund. So what we did is we, the council agreed to let us put it in the forum fund to gain some interest in the open market rather than through a savings account. And then we've just been drawing it down as we needed for the street projects that are going on.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Britt. Has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight point one, discuss the resolution to appoint a human resources coordinator.
I will move the appointment of the human resources coordinator.
Do we need?
Motion by Counsel Johnson. Is there support?
All support.
Support with the name. Can I say the name?
Yes, we can.
Support for Joy Rudabish and, for the discussion, when you're?
Okay, so a motion by Counsel Johnson, supported by Counsel Freely.
No, me.
I'm sorry, supported by Counsel Motley to appoint Joy Rudabush as the human resources coordinator for the city of Virginia. Further discussion? Counsel Motley?
I just wanted to say I'm super excited to have her on board with our team. I think she's going to be an absolutely fabulous addition. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item eight point one-one is to discuss a resolution to appoint a finance director.
I would make the motion to appoint Megan Bothwell, the runner-up from the finalists of the interviews for the finance director position.
Moved by Counsel Freely and supported by Counsel Johnson to appoint Megan Bothwell, the next individual on the list for appointment as their finance director. Is there any further discussion?
I'd like to make a motion to table this.
Counsel Motley makes a motion to table. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Counsel Bachschneider. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion, roll call please, Pam.
Yandich is absent. Bachschneider?
Aye.
Friedleeb?
No.
Cuffey?
No.
Johnson?
No.
Motley?
Yes.
Paulson?
No.
Motion fails, four to two. Counsel Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor, since we can have discussion on the motion on the floor. I think Megan is the most qualified person. She did come in second place of the interviews. She knows the city very well. I have absolutely no reservations about her stepping up and taking the position that she definitely deserves. And instead of having to spend time background checking and training and numerous other things, she can step in immediately and help us with the budget. She can help us get ready for next year, and she can help train in the new person on payroll and all those things she's currently doing. I think it would be a disservice to our residents to not move forward with this hire at this time.
Thank you, Counsel Johnson. So we'll move to? So we'll move to, Counselor Motley, do you have another comment?
How many people applied for this position, Britt?
Seven.
Okay. I know it's this council's past practice for certain jobs, I guess more pertaining to union, which this is not, to hire the next person in line, but I am, can't emphasize how important this position is in the state of our current budget with the City of Virginia. I'm very concerned about who gets this particular position, so at this time, I would be supportive of looking into outsourcing, but I will not be agreeing to this at this time, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other further comments before we move on to the next item on the agenda? Okay, we'll move to item number 8.12.
Point of order, Mayor, there was a motion and, and support on the table.
Oh, I apologize, motion and, tabling motion failed, so what's motion?
To appoint.
Megan Bothwell?
Correct, to the finance director.
Okay, so that's, motion, there's motion and supported?
Correct.
So further discussion, I apologize for that, thank you for the point of order. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call please.
No.
Freedle?
Aye.
Huffy?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motley?
No.
Paulson?
Aye.
And Counselor Biondich is absent.
Order three. Fail? Order two fail. Thank you, okay. Counselor Johnson.
Would legal please weigh in on what the next steps are? Please, I, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, Ryan, but I'm at a total loss as to why we would not hire a qualified candidate at this time.
Mr. Lindsey?
Thank you, Mayor. So at this point, what we may want to do is just refer it back to the committee of the whole, and I know that may not feel like a satisfying answer, but the, the motion having come before the council and, and not succeeding tonight, we couldn't resurrect that same motion except under a very limited circumstances, and given the vote that was taken, the likelihood of those circumstances arising or the motion passing, so I think to regroup and come up with a secondary plan, or to have further discussion on the topic in general may be the most appropriate path.
Thank you, Mr. Lindsey.
I will move to, I don't, I don't know the right wording, but I'll move it to the committee of the whole since there is a counselor missing this evening.
Yeah, so do we need to be exact about what that motion is, move, were we moving to the council, committee of the whole?
Mayor, I think the, I think the motion is sufficient, we know what the, the topic of the motion is, and we'll move that item back to the committee of the whole.
Okay, motion by Counselor Johnson to move this issue back to the committee of the whole for additional discussion, is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Motley, is there any further discussion? Counselor Bachsneider.
Thank you, it was a failed motion to try to table it to the committee of the whole, is this not just the same motion in essence?
Mr. Lindsey?
It has the same effect, but it, it proceeds under a different procedural posture, so basically, once the question has been answered, and given the answer to the question, we can move that topic then back to the committee of the whole meeting, we're just not suspending a motion to do it. Makes sense?
Thank you, Counselor Bachsneider. Any further action needs to be taken here? So read the motion one more time, please, move it back to the committee of the whole for additional discussion, is that correct?
Yes.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
A motion, please, roll call, Pam, thank you.
Freedle?
Aye.
Huffy?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motley?
Yes.
Paulson?
Aye.
Biondich is absent. Bachsneider?
No.
Motion passes, five one, thank you. Item 8.12 is adopt the resolution to apply for and accept funds from the Minnesota Department of Public Safety for the TZD grant, which is the Total Zero Deaths Grant, which is a, a grant that the departments get all over the state of Minnesota, and they pick a topic in which enforcement action is going to be concentrated on, and all departments are involved in this, and is totally reimbursable by the state of Minnesota.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Bachsneider, is there support?
Support.
By Counselor Paulson, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Thank you. A move to item nine, committee reports, 9.1, the committee of the whole meeting that was held on Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025, and we'll turn this portion of our city council meeting over to our city administrator, Britt C. Benes. Britt?
Thank you. At the committee of the whole meeting on September 2nd, we had a presentation from Tom Kelly from Walker, Drew and Hani regarding our 2024 audit. It was an interesting, interesting presentation, and it was good to get this thing finally wrapped up. Mr. Mike Jerrick from Jerrick and Associates was present to discuss the legislative session and other issues that happened during the year at the Capitol. It was moved and supported to approve the resolution to enter into a contract with Jerrick and Associates as a city lobbyist from October 1st, 2025, to September 30th, 2026.
So moved.
A move to approve by Counselor Bachsneider, is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Johnson, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Was moved and supported to appoint Emily Hickson to the Human Rights Commission for a three-year term ending January 31st, 2028. Vote.
A move to approve by Counselor Paulson, is there support?
Support.
By Counselor Bachsneider, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Moved and supported to appoint Angelina Brisky to the Human Rights Commission for the remainder of a three-year term ending January 31st, 2027.
So moved.
A move to approve by Counselor Bachsneider, is there support?
Support.
By Counselor Motley, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Was moved and supported to approve advertising for recreation assistance?
Moved. A move to approve by Counselor Freely, is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Paulson, is there any further discussion? Counselor Motley.
How many was this up to?
We have, I think we, then we approved 10, up to 10, a full-time, what was it, there's part-time positions, up to what, 10?
10 full-time equivalents.
Yeah, 20, 20 full-time equivalents at, on a part-time basis. And how many do we normally have working at any given time?
Two.
Two, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Roll call please, Pam.
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motley?
Yes.
Paulson?
Aye.
Biondich is absent. Bachsneider?
No.
Freedle?
Aye.
Motion passes, six one, five one, thank you. Next item, please.
Thank you. We had a discussion regarding the Public Safety Center and the, and cleaning and custodial work that would happen, happen over there, it was moved and supported to direct staff to meet with the employees and determine the workload and to include the fire department in the discussion.
So moved. Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson and probably supported by Counselor Freely, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Had discussion regarding the trees from the Buildings and Ground Committee, the pre-discussion at the golf course, it was moved and supported to approve the Parks and Recreation Director to obtain quotes to purchase mature trees and discuss the location of planting along hole number two.
Moved to approve by Counselor Freely, is there support? By Counselor Paulson, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Matt Reed from SCH was present to discuss two change order requests that, from the Mindott-Borgan Road project, after discussion, it was moved and supported to approve change order number eight for the Borgon Road project with Mindott in the amount of $39,693.52.
And this money comes out of some state aid?
State aid account, correct.
State aid account, thank you. So moved, moved to approve by Counselor Freely, is there support?
Support.
By Counselor Motley, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Reed reported that the change order number 12 was for the street lighting basis, during construction, they couldn't dig into the ground due to the amount of ledge rock in that area, thus the base styles had to be changed to support the lights, it was moved and supported to approve the change order with Mindott in the amount of $62,330.
Moved. A move to approve by Counselor Freely, is there support?
Support.
By Counselor Motley, further discussion, this also comes out of that account as well?
Correct.
Thank you, Counselor Paulson. Okay, thank you, jumped the gun there. Moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Reed also gave an update on the request that we had given him to look at the outfall, or the overflow with the wastewater treatment plant, and the outfall where it comes out of the wastewater treatment plant. Reed said that after some, some investigation, they don't know that that's the issue, that they feel there's more pressing issues upstream of our system that we should be looking at. The smoke testing has been completed, and the results are going to be compiled very shortly, once we have those, we'll have further discussion on this matter. It was moved and supported to approve the resolution to hire one dual role firefighter EMT.
So moved. Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson, is there support?
Support.
By Counselor Motley, further discussion? This is a replacement for the one that has, that left for another agency.
For down four, I believe?
Or no, okay, thank you. Moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Was moved and supported to approve the Live Barn venue agreement for the Iron Trail Motors Event Center, and further discussion, with further discussion at the council meeting today.
Thank you. Counsel, Counselor Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm not sure if, if our legal has looked into that, but after some of the questions that were raised, I'm not comfortable voting this, for this at all tonight, until we get some further information, and part of that was the exclusivity clause, some of the cable commission members had emailed that their opposition to that exclusivity clause, and then I think with the other one that I had a concern was the content, the owning of the content.
Mr. Lindsey?
Thank you, Mayor. So Mr. Silver has reached out, and we have been in contact with Live Barn, Live Barn has indicated that the way that they're interpreting the exclusivity contract would not prohibit manually-based production such as cable access, it's just the live stream with the automated cameras is their, is their area of exclusivity, and they've also indicated as far as video footage, they would have no problem providing licensure to the city to make sure that the city would also have access to it.
And is that part, thank you for that, Brian, and Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Counselor Paulson.
Thank you. Is that in the new contract, and should we be waiting for that contract draft before voting on this?
Mr. Lindsey?
Thank you. So we, we don't have the updated language finalized yet, the council could, if the council chose, take action to approve it contingent upon the changes being included, so essentially you would have the terms with the change, with the changes, or you could move it forward to the next meeting. What I would indicate though is, according to the terms of the contract, the last contract has expired, and the, the present agreement or offer that they've made to us to enter into a contract was intended to be effective as of the beginning of September.
Counselor Paulson?
Thank you again, Mayor. So would that mean that the exclusivity would just have more of a definition, their definition of exclusivity in the contract language?
So the, the clarification would, we would clarify the definition of the exclusivity provision to automated camera service, or we would create an exclusion for manually-produced such as cable access.
And then as well as the content licensure, license to the city?
Correct.
Okay, so based upon those two factors, I think were the concern factors, so I would move approval contingent upon the contract language having that, those two provisions. Thank you.
Support. Motion by Counselor Paulson and supported by Counselor Johnson, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
We did have discussion at the meeting regarding the 2024 request, the request to purchase the grader, John Deere has proposed a new payment schedule that was a little more in line to what the council was looking for the first times, that the dollar amounts weren't very high, and there would be a balloon payment after year three. Did not have a quorum, enough quorum to purchase at the meeting, so it was this, moved and supported to move this discussion to this council meeting.
I will move purchase of the grader with the updated numbers.
Counselor Johnson moves to approve the purchase of the grader with the updated information and lease, is there support? Is there support?
Support for discussion.
Support by Counselor Freely, prefer the discussion.
What would be the plan then for the balloon payment when that becomes due, and that was at the end of five years? We have a plan in place to be able to, or would we just turn it back over? We just have to decide then what we're going to do? Ultimately, we're either leasing it or purchasing it, we're just, we need it, is what we say, so we, we need to have this thing for the next five years and then determine whether it's something we keep, or we got a good deal leasing it.
That's, that is correct.
And Jim has convinced us primarily that the others are not operational enough to rely on, therefore we need something of this caliber, a new piece of equipment to get things done this winter, correct?
Okay, thank you. Counselor Motley.
Pam, did we have some, or Britt, did we have some bonds dropping off in the next couple of years too? Where, where?
Trying to find that right now, too.
Okay, sorry for the.
Oh, yes, yes we did, that was kind of the theory, is by that time we would have debt gone, and we would plan for this debt to be there.
Is that like three years down, or two years down the road? I can't remember.
There's a wave of them next year, and then I believe there's two years after that, there's another wave.
Okay, so that would be about five years when the lease is up?
Yep, 2,000 approximately after '26 falls off per year, and then I believe two years after that is another chunk.
Excellent, thank you.
And we can, and if I, please correct me if this is an accurate statement, Britt and Brian, so some of the bonds that come out, like for example, the HRA bond, that's going to be gone, and the essential lease on the clinic, that bond, that's going to be gone, it's not going to be charged against us either, so that's a couple of things to consider as we discuss this issue. Counselor Bachsneider?
Thank you, what is the annual payment for the first four years?
It is 8,500 a month for six months, because we can either get billed monthly or as one lump sum for the first year.
And then what is the final balloon payment?
215,000.
And so if we choose at that time to not make the balloon payment and turn it back over, are we penalized in any way?
There's a buyback program.
Can you describe that?
I don't have that information.
I just am not familiar with a buyback program.
Don't believe we, it's like we, we're renting it, but there wouldn't be a penalty, they would just buy it back.
There's no penalty if we do the smaller payments, and if we don't have the money for the balloon payment to turn it back over, so we would be able to just do it again, essentially?
If it's a lemon, yes, then definitely we'd do it again, we just don't like this one, we want something bigger, we want something smaller, we want, do that again.
Thank you, I think this is a much more reasonable solution that we've been looking for kind of throughout this whole discussion, so thank you.
Oh, thank you, Counselor Bachsneider. So for me, it's about, oh, okay, go ahead, Counselor. So for me, it's about, oh, okay, go ahead, Counsel Paulson.
Mayor, so I know that we went back and forth so many different times and it's, it was kind of a source of angst on a lot of our, in a lot of our conversations. And I know that there was frustration expressed by our Public Works Director. Um, and then I think for me, it was just the huge expenditure, um, that we had not planned or budgeted for. Um, and then when I had reached out to John Deere and had talked about, you know, what could you guys do? Could we get creative? Um, then when Jim Rossett brought this forward at the last committee, the whole meeting, I really was surprised at how much more John Deere was willing to move off of the original numbers that I had talked to them about. And so basically we're just being charged, if you want to look at it, for the six months that we would, it would actually be in operation, that we would be using it in the winter months. And, um, at some point in all these different conversations, we had talked about a potential leasing of a greater for around ten thousand dollars a month. So we're keeping it under ten thousand at eighty, what was it, eighty-five hundred? So like under fifty-two thousand annually. Um, and then, not next year, but in twenty-seven, we have two lease payments that are dropping off that will totally absorb that fifty-one or fifty-two thousand. And then the gap for twenty-six, do we know how we're going to cover that gap? I just, I want to say thank you, Pam, to you first of all, for all the time that you took and back and forth and back and forth.
Welcome.
Um, and this is a large purchase that we really didn't budget for, but these numbers work very well, uh, they work much better in allowing us to obtain the vehicle or the greater. So what does that look like in twenty-six budget?
In twenty-six, the first four payments would be due in January, depending on how we?
How we structure it?
January, February, March, and April. And then in November and December would be the next two. So that's how, and then six payments.
That's how they're going to structure it. Okay.
And if we, we can structure it however we want. If we want to make one payment a year or, you know, a monthly payment, whatever.
Okay.
Doesn't matter.
I want to say thank you. I know there's a lot of angst with this purchase, but we've at least got the numbers to where the numbers should, will work for us. And then we can decide down the line if we want to do that balloon payment or turn it in and do something different. But in the interim, we have a new working condition under warranty, uh, during that duration greater. So thanks so much.
You're welcome.
And I think it's important to note also that if this is purchase gets approved that, you know, uh, the department head has to work with staff to carve that out of the existing budget that they have. So that's where it has to come from. An additional, uh, increase in that budget, it has come out of the budget as, uh, as proposed here. So, uh, anybody else have anything before we vote? It has been moved and supported and, and we have two items here. So item, uh, item K is the dis, is, uh, to discuss and adopt the resolution for the lease to rent or own, rent to own of the two thousand twenty-four greater, correct? And that has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Uh, Counsel Buck Snyder?
Um, it's, it's on the next one, but I think it's relevant for this part of the discussion. When we purchased the camera system, a few weeks after that, we were told that our leasing may not be approved. Do we know if that lease was approved and are we going to be approved for a lease on this?
They really wanted to see the audit, the twenty-twenty-four audit. And now that we've gotten that, they seem to be fine with it.
So has it been formally approved yet or it's in the final stages?
We're in the final stages. I had to get in the last few things from the audit.
And we anticipate it being proved, approved? And one more time, if we do not make the final balloon payment and we turn it back in, we would not be penalized? You're shaking your head? No?
No penalty. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, uh, Counsel Buck Snyder. Okay. It has been moved and supported to adopt the resolution for the lease to rent to own two thousand twenty-four, uh, John Deere Greater. Is there any further discussion? A hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Well, that was, uh, that was a double one, huh? Well, you have a K and then you have another K. Okay, you got K A and all K B. Okay. Adopt the resolution for the lease with the dealer, buyback for the two thousand twenty-four greater.
Moved.
Moved by Counsel Motley. Is there support?
Right.
Yeah, support by Counsel Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, next item, please, Britt.
Sir L is, we went into closed session to talk about contract for animal control services with Musabi Humane Society and purchase of property as well as labor negotiations with L E L S. It came out of the closed session. It was moved and supported to direct staff to communicate with the Humane Society regarding setting up a meeting with the council and board, Humane Society Board, consistent with the discussion in the closed meeting. They have proposed October thirteenth at six P M. The location to be determined.
Okay. Will actually be taken?
Don't have to.
Hmm?
No, we don't have to.
Okay.
Um, the next motion was the, uh, motion to authorize staff to proceed with the negotiations for the purchase of property known as parcels ninety-ten, one-four-zero-six-zero, ninety-ten, one-four-two-three-zero, and ninety-ten, I'm sorry, ninety-thirty-two-eighty, as discussed in the closed meeting.
Full move.
Uh, move to approve by Counsel Buck Snyder. Is there support? Is there support?
Support.
Support by Counsel Johnson. Further discussion for the public's, uh, edification? Could you please explain what this, these properties are? Jenny, maybe? Or Britt? Jenny, would you would please?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Um, these are the properties that we've been discussing with the school district for a number of years, um, in trying to acquire so that we can, you know, work with property owners in the surrounding area to get those properties back on the tax roll.
Thank you. Has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Uh, Counsel Freely?
Needless to say, I have some enlightened self-interest in this to some degree, being an adjacent landowner to some of these properties with some interest in that. And I am just, I have to voice my public opinion that I find it just very distressing that the city of Virginia was willing to put out a close to a million dollar property to the school district to build their school for fifty thousand dollars with conversations at that time that when these kinds of properties became available, there could be, uh, an exchange of sorts so that the city would be able to acquire those. And now they're asking market price for those properties. And I just find that really distressing because they're not in any more difficult position financially than we are. So in any event, I just, I appreciate the negotiations that have been taking place and we're at the point of at least being able to acquire those. But I think the school district is being, I'll have to say unfair with regard to how they're dealing with the city of Virginia. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, uh, Counsel Freely. So it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? That money would come from where, Britt?
Please, we discussed contingency.
Pardon?
The contingency fund.
Yep, thank you. Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? A hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, I'm sorry, Counsel Johnson? No? Okay, uh, motion carries. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Counsel Johnson?
Thank you. Before we wrap up that, I'd like to go back to, um, to items that did not make it to the full council vote, um, and so they can be discussed and voted on here tonight. Um, I would move to approve the resolution to hire the lead rec assistant.
Say me, um, Mayor. The candidate we were going to offer the position to has chosen to not take the position. So at this point, we want to repost the position.
I will withdraw that motion and I will move to repost for the position of lead rec assistant as it is critical to what gets done at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center.
Uh, Counsel Johnson moves to post for the, uh, lead recreation assistant. Uh, is there support? Or support by Counsel Freely. Is there any further discussion? Counsel Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Could we get some clarification? Is that internal or external? Was the other external as well? And you went through the whole process of interviewing candidates?
We did two rounds of interviews, actually.
So if we just did a past practice of going the next one, should we, do we have to post or can we go down the list?
The candidates that were, the other candidates were not qualified, I guess you could say.
How many applicants were there?
There was thirteen, I believe. And we interviewed seven the first round. We did four the second round.
Oh, I don't know how I feel about this.
Put it back to personnel. You guys are having a meeting Monday.
Yeah, I feel like rather than po, putting that like that right out for post, maybe we should have a little bit more discussion and see if we need to change how we're posting it to get the kind of candidates we're looking for. So, um, maybe at this time I just wouldn't support that. I would rather have the little bit more broader discussion. Thank you.
Okay, but has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion?
I would, I would, uh, change my motion and, or withdraw my motion. I'll withdraw my motion first.
Okay, uh, Counsel Johnson withdraws his motion. And obviously, if I'm correct, you withdraw your second as well. Okay, thank you.
I will move it back to personnel for further discussion.
Okay, Counsel Johnson moves to refer the lead recreation assistant position back to the personnel committee for additional discussion. Is there support? Support by Counsel Paulson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Uh, roll call, please, Pam.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motley?
Yes.
Paulson?
Aye.
Yonah is absent. Buck Snyder?
No.
Freely?
Aye.
Huffy?
Aye. Motion passes five-one. Thank you. Next, uh, uh, issue, Mr. Johnson, Counsel Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, um, and I noticed that there was not enough votes to spend money at the committee of the whole meeting, so I will move to approve the three year contract for premier type pyrotechnics for the fireworks display. That is, that is a thing that we have done for a long time. Um, and I think it's important, especially the winter fireworks, the amount of people it draws to town on an odd Saturday in, um, November. So I will move approval of the contract.
Counsel Johnson moves to resurrect, uh, actually resurrected the issue of the fireworks display, uh, for the two, uh, dates of two thousand twenty-six. Moved in, uh, moved by Counsel Johnson to approve that expenditure. Is there support? Is there support?
All support.
Aye.
Just, I agree.
Support by Counsel.
It brings in a lot of people into town and there's a lot of commerce during that timeframe.
Thank you.
I would support.
Well, further discussion? So, uh, I have some discussion. I think that moving this, uh, 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 to approve, uh, I know there was been some discussion at the, my, uh, council meetings where other cities have raised, have a fundraiser every year and they raise money for their fireworks display. I think it's important to do that. There's a lot of things that we've tried to do here in Virginia that has not come to fruition because we need to get the support from the community to do that. However, I, approving this, I think it's important to have that. It's a part of, it's within our D N A with respect to the, you know, the, particularly the celebration, uh, this serves around our country, whether it's on the Fourth of July or not. And so, uh, by moving it, uh, to expend it, we can also, uh, take a look at, uh, engaging the community and businesses around the area to, uh, to, uh, to donate. I'll be the first one to donate the first hundred dollars or more as a result of that too. So it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Counsel Motley?
So I am hesitant to vote for this knowing I'm from Avlith originally, so I know that theirs is all donated. Um, I am hesitant to vote yes on this. I'm obviously for fireworks displays. I would love to see if we could get local businesses to donate to the city of Virginia to pay for the fireworks display. Um, how soon does this company need to, how soon do we have to get back to them for this three-year contract? How long do we have?
Um, soon. Because they need to schedule and they need to order and, um, the first payment I think is due December first.
Is there any way we can do something as a city to try to get donations from the community like other cities to pay for the fireworks?
This is how this works with some of the volunteer organizations. I'll give you some examples. Uh, there's a, Aurora has a Fourth of July fundraising, uh, event. They had, they're at, they participated in the food truck festival in the city of Virginia and sell burgers in different wares in order to accommodate that. So, uh, so, uh, Evol, they, they have a committee, a volunteer, actually a fireworks committee, in which some of the businesses are on that committee and they raise money for that as well. It happens, uh, all over, you know, uh, uh, the area. Uh, I'm simply going to support this because we, I think it's important for us to have it. And so by supporting, uh, the expenditure, we may be able to recover some of the expenditures through some assistance through the general public, hoping that people will step up. And, uh, like I said, I volunteered to be one of them. And if they need more than a hundred dollars, I'd be happy to provide it. So Counsel Motley?
Thank you.
Counsel Buck Snyder?
Thank you. I believe back in the first quarter of this year, when we approved this contract for Fourth of July and for, um, Festival of Trees for this year, we had a discussion around Land of the Loon, if we were going to do Land of the Loon. I believe there was a motion, and I, I could be incorrect, I did not look, that Counsel Johnson had made and that I had supported to look at doing the Festival of Trees and the Land of the Loon instead for this year. Um, so I don't know if that was part of the discussion. Are we locking in on the Fourth of July and Festival of Trees with this contract or is there flexibility in the dates, um, on that? Thank you.
Pam? What is the contract say?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is locked in for July fourth, twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, and twenty-eighth. They could be open to another date because obviously, uh, next year is the birthday of the United States. So, um, it's going to be a big celebration everywhere, but, um, I'm sure June is probably not a very busy month for them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, before we go to Counsel Paulson, then Counsel Johnson or Johnson, uh, Counsel Paulson? I want to be tactful here. This is the United States of America. And part of the United States of America is to celebrate our nation's birth. And the history and all the culture and everything we have here, fireworks display is common in order to accomplish that goal and objective. And every single community almost in the state of Minnesota, the United States, has a Fourth of July celebration. I'm, I would be embarrassed if we didn't have one. Counsel Johnson, then over to Counsel Paulson.
Thank you. Um, I did ask a few questions after that meeting and one of the challenges with the Land of the Loon is the number of people and where people are located during the Land of the Loon festival with the park full of people, um, vehicles utilizing other parts that we usually block off for safety reasons. Um, makes it really hard. Uh, the, the, um, firework launching space on the lake is not an, not an adequate safe space in June when we have the Land of the Loon. So that would, we would require seeking a different spot to safely launch and display those. So that's why I have kind of dropped that is because of the logistical challenges that the June would bring. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Counsel Johnson. Uh, Counsel Paulson?
Thank you. So I'm, I'm reading the contract as we speak. It's twenty-one thousand a year for those two dis, firework displays, one in July, one in November. And what we're doing is we're, I think what you stated at the committee of the whole, we're locking in these prices, um, for the next three years. So that's a, in my opinion, that's a positive in case things go up. We're actually locking in, um, that price. But I feel like we still have an opportunity to maybe partner with, you maybe revive Virginia or other
or other community, maybe it's Essentia, maybe it's some, you know, to help us maybe offset these. I don't think, I don't see why we couldn't do both hand in hand. So yes, approve the contract and try to work on a community grassroots project together to offset it. So yes, we budgeted for it, but if we get donations in, then we, we can decrease the budget by that much. So I'm in favor of doing it.
Yep, I'm with you.
Yep, thank you.
Counselor Motley?
Would that require an additional motion if this were to pass? Or is this just something we? Okay, I feel like maybe a motion might, I know you're shaking your head, but just so we'd have, we'd have follow-up as to?
There's a motion on the floor now.
I understand. This would be an additional one to reach out to local parties that might be interested in donating. Thank you.
Sure, we can take some other action once we act on this one. Counselor Motley, thank you. It has been noted and supported to approve a three-year contract for pyrotechnic services based on what the contract says. And I, that would be for the Fourth of July celebration and the holiday parade, correct? Been supported, is there any further discussion there? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Rule call, please Pam.
Motley?
Yes.
Paulson?
Aye.
Absent, Bach Snyder?
No.
Friedle?
Aye.
Huffy?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion passes five one, thank you. Counselor Motley?
So Brian, you want to help me with this motion on just how we'd reach out to local entities that might be willing to consider donating to our fireworks display?
Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. I think one version of the motion could be just a motion to direct staff to seek support for the fireworks display.
Okay.
And I think that would be enough authorization that the city staff could reach out and just check to see what the interest may be in assisting the city with those costs.
All right, I'll make that motion, please.
Okay, read back to motion Pam. Do we have that?
No, I was.
Okay, rephrase, please.
Direct staff to seek donations to assist with the fireworks display.
I guess, I mean, I could have said that. I was just, I'm thinking in my head of all these local organizations that do wonderful volunteer work. And I'm wondering if we need to, I guess we don't have to name them, but you know, Beer Fest, or the Iron Range Half Marathon, or you know, all these great organizations. That's, I guess I was hoping all of, they could be included in this, but, or businesses. But, okay, thanks. Reach out to community organizations? Could I amend that motion to that? Okay, thank you.
Okay Pam, would you please read back the motion by Counselor Motley?
To direct staff to seek donations from community organizations to assist with the fireworks display.
Is that correct, Counselor Motley? Is there support?
Support.
By Counselor, was there support already? Support by Counselor Paulson, moved by Counselor Motley, supported by Counselor Paulson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Rule call, please Pam. I'm sorry, you have some additional discussion? No, okay, go ahead.
Paulson?
Aye.
Janice Bach Snyder?
No.
Friedle?
Aye.
Huffy?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motley?
Yes.
Motion passes five one, thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, next item, please.
Further items from that meeting?
Okay, thank you. We'll move to item ten on the agenda, which is Commission Liaison Reports. Does any Counselor have a Commission Liaison Report they'd like to disseminate this evening? Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. The official posting for the drum group has been created. And I'm looking it up here real quick. I'd like to, if I can find it in the right spot here. The Human Rights Commission has been working with a local group along with Parks and Rec to promote the weekly drumming at Silver Lake. And if you just give me one second here, here it is. Drum Night every Wednesday, six to eight P.M., one hundred North, Ninth Avenue, Virginia. I'm in five five seven nine two. Drum Night is an event hosted by, I'm going to do my best, I apologize to my native friends, Bai Wah, Bai Ku, Kang Ning, to bring our relatives and community together through feast and drum. The drum is our teacher and we are students, we, and are the students we love. Laugh, share stories of ceremony and culture. We encourage families and kids to, and students who want to learn more and come share with this. It will be held every week at the Klein Coopalletti Building. And then as we move into winter, it will be either indoors there or if the crowds dictate, we will find other indoor spaces. But it's a great opportunity to learn more about our native culture. And that concludes my Human Rights Commission. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Counselor Johnson. Any other reports to be given this evening by the Council? Move on to item number eleven, Department Head Reports. Department Head, come forward. I know that, I know that Mr. Brian Silver, our Park and Rec Director, does have a report. Brian, welcome to tonight's meeting.
Good evening, Counsel. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you again. It's been a while since I've been up here. I've been enjoying my summer, tickling my toes in the green grass of Alcott Park on Tuesday night, listening to some great music. I know several of you came out to a couple of the concerts and really enjoyed seeing you guys there, along with all of the citizens that came out. But since Music in the Park ended, it's given me some time to reflect on this past summer in our park system. And in discussing this past summer with our staff, they wanted me to come before you this evening and tell you that how much they appreciate the actions that the Council took in ensuring that we had four summer student laborers working in our parks this summer. Thanks to this Council approving four summer student laborers, rather than less summer students like we've had in the years past, we got a lot done in our park system. If you didn't notice, we got several decent-sized projects done by staff this summer. The Lions Building Residing Project was completed. That's a project that has been on the books and we've been working towards for a couple of years now. It just kept getting bumped back, and it was a grant-funded project. We also undertook another project, which was Monkey Island. If you've been by Monkey Island, you will see that it has completely changed since Land of the Loon. It looks a whole lot better. Our summer students did a great job in cleaning it up. And then our staff got in there. We actually put some fabric down to prevent weeds in the future. And then we've added a whole lot of mulch in the area. So it's going to be a much nicer and enjoyable-looking area for years to come. In addition, last minute, at the beginning of the summer, we took on a project of redoing the bocce ball courts. Half of our bocce ball courts up at North Side Park had been unused for over a decade. Well, the women's league was actually expanding and they needed more courts. So our staff got out there and revitalized those courts that had sat empty for years. We would not have been able to accomplish all of these different projects without the addition of our summer students. So we really appreciate that. And we were talking a little bit more about everything that happened in our park system this year. Do you realize in our park system, and I'm just talking Alcott Park and Silver Lake, this summer, from June through the end of August, those two parks saw a hundred and seventy-one events in that three-month period? This includes twelve events of Music in the Park at the Fountain in Alcott Park, thirteen nights of Drum Night at Klein Coopalletti Building, thirteen nights of, or thirteen afternoons of the Farmer's Market at Klein Coopalletti, six nights of city band concerts at the Bandstand in Alcott Park, and then public events that the entire public was encouraged to come to. These events included the Rotary Fishing Tournament, Land of the Loon, our Fourth of July fireworks, National Night Out with the Police Department, Brew Fest, the Labor Day Assembly, and the Iron Range Five K that took place around both of our lakes. In addition to all these public events, there were a lot of private events. Would it surprise you to know between the shelters, the buildings in Alcott Park and the shelters and the Klein Coopalletti at Silver Lake, that we hosted a hundred and twenty-six private events in those park buildings this summer? And while the summer may be over by the school year and by the way that the weather feels out there after this past weekend, the summer is not over for our park system. We still have lots of events coming up in our park system. Tonight, you just approved National Recovery Night, which will be taking place in Alcott Park. We have several other big events coming in our park system. So encourage you to get outdoors before it's too late and get into our parks and take part in some of these great events. We've got Recovery Night. We've got the Food Truck Festival coming up, along with several other great events. Encourage you to come out and get some fresh air before the fresh air turns bitterly cold. Thank you again, and look forward to being back with you here on Tuesday evenings.
Thank you, Brian. If you could just stay up here for a moment? Thank you very much. I just want to, because you gave the report, I just want to give a shout out here. I attended the Weld Rice Standard Public Hearing at the Iron Terrible Events Center. And the coordinator, part of the coordinator Nancy Nor, former Director of Jobs for Minnesota, and the staff there, Paul Pelletier from Rams, and all the individuals who were there to speak for or against the standard that was set in the rulemaking that the Minnesota Police Control Agency is considering applying to the mining industry. Nothing but accolades from the administrative staff, from people that were attending that event that I was there. I can't tell you how many people said what a beautiful venue this is and how professional your staff was to making that great event for everybody. It was well-organized, well-maintained, and there was attention to every detail. So I thank you for that moving forward. So thank you for that, Brian.
We have an incredible staff that goes above and beyond on a daily basis. And we really need to do more to recognize the great job that they do. Thank you for bringing this up publicly for them to hear.
And one more event, I was, of course, up at the Iron Terrible Events Center. I've come there three or four times a week, as you know, and take advantage of the great fitness facility that we have there. And I watched the staff working on the ice, putting the ice in the main arena. I mean, those logos are stunning. It's absolutely beautiful and very, very professional. You should be very proud for what they did. It's just impeccable display of artwork and the advertising. And some of the advertisers are just really pleased with how that turned out. So thank you for that. It was very professional. I've been seen, I've been to the Curling Bonds Spoons, I've been down to the Duluth Deck. With all due respect, this is top-notch. So thank your staff for that.
Definitely, thank you.
Yep. Any other Department Head Reports? I believe we have Jody Grabenovsky, our Library Director, who's on her way up to the podium. Give us a library report. Jody, good evening.
Hi, everyone. So after going after Brian, so I can give you some indoor things, kind of. So just so you know, Family Storytime starts on Friday at ten thirty. So Wednesdays, we will have events every Wednesday after school at three o'clock. This coming Wednesday is a creative writing circle. This has been a request from some of our students who are aspiring to write, but also some of our other community members. So if that is something that you enjoy, come hang out with Sophia. And she'll have writing prompts and all that kind of stuff happening for you. And then we have Simon Says Art Edition is also on the seventeenth. It's exactly what it sounds like. Simon Says, there's going to be prompts, you will have various things to do art with. And then Board Game on the twenty-fourth. And one of our very avid board game players is going to come and join the students. So one of the things that the library has been doing is we check out board games and puzzles. So September is National Library Card Sign-up Month, and it's just a reminder. So one card, many possibilities, and just some of the things that you can check out, just as a reminder. We have various passes. So we have the State Park Pass, Great Lakes Aquarium, but also we have bikes and helmets. We have board games, we have puzzles, we have ukuleles. We have a telescope, which now is getting darker earlier, so that's kind of a big thing to do. And then some different adventure packs. So if any of that kind of stuff is interesting to you, or you want to come try a board game before you buy it, come check it out with your library cards. There are all sorts of cool things. And then we are participating in the Great North Star Read together on Saturday, September twentieth. It is the same day as the Food Truck Festival. It's just from eleven to one. So if you need a break from the Food Truck Festival, come hang out at the library. We're going to have a book swap. We'll have some buttons and some other cool, fun things. If you need a book, we'll also have books to take. So depending on the weather, it might be outside. But if it's a little on the cool side, we'll have everything set up inside. So that's what I have for you for September so far.
So far. Thank you, Jody.
One last thing. Because we are staffed, as we are going to get, our hours are ten to six, Monday through Thursday, ten to five on Friday, and Saturday's ten to two.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, any other Department Head Reports? We'll move from left to right. Britt, do you have any additional information to disseminate?
We are working on the grand opening and ribbon cutting for the Public Safety Center on October second, starting at four o'clock. There will be a formal press release and invitations going out to the legislators and dignitaries coming up sooner.
And I know you've been working hard and we had a meeting with your speeches, so thank you for putting that forward very much.
Just to let everybody know, this will be before we are actually moved in. Because once the police move in, we can't go in. So we are going to be going, doing the public, the week before they move in so that we can see the whole building. It's probably the only time a lot of people get to see the whole building, so it'd be a really good event to come see.
Thank you. And to follow up to that, I did get an email about a half hour ago from Renee Pasol from DVO. She's very excited, of course, an Iron Range resident for many years and a very great member of the community for their family. They want to come up and do a special report a few days before the groundbreaking. So she's going to be giving a call and looking forward to the dedication. So thank you for that, Britt. Okay. All right. Jenny, anything to report? Pam? Thanks for all your hard work on these fee things. I know that it was, it was an arduous process for you, so. Okay, we'll move to Counselor Reports. Any Counselor, I'd like to give a report this evening? Okay, I have one item before we adjourn. And last year, I went to the Park and Rec Commission meeting. And maybe it was, it was in the early spring, I think. And we talk about some of the activities we have in the state of Virginia, the things that we provide to our community and to our children. And with, with the winter we have with the parade and that Revive Virginia takes care of in the general community, you know, there needs to be more. And when I went to the Park and Rec Commission, I asked them if they would support a effort to have what they call an expansion of that particular event into something called Winter Fest. And try to get a group together, get some volunteers together to put it together, a little deal, like a, like a mini Bentleyville, for the lack of a better analogy, where we could, and Brian Silver is well aware of that, and try to get Alcott Park opened up. And families, businesses, anybody can have a space at no cost to them. And they can put any kind of display they want for the winter. You know, they can have lights, they can have big snow sculpture, whatever they want. And it'll be all lit up at night. We can open up the Lions Club and open up the old Italian-American club and those kind of things and have popcorn for the kids and all that kind of things. And there would be a great event to have for, for that activity. And then those lights stay on for a couple of weeks while people drive through with their children. It's like a little mini Bentleyville with, and so no one's, we weren't able to take that on. I would like to. I would like to reach out to the public, say if you're interested in doing something like this, it would be a wonderful event that we would have, and if you're interested in doing so, and get ahold of, maybe even Revive Virginia, they need all the help they can get. They're working vigorously and diligently to try to provide things for the community, and we need, they need more volunteers, so please, you know, consider doing so, and if you're interested in doing the Winterfest activity, please give us a call and see what we can do to try to accomplish that, because I've seen, I've been to many places throughout Minnesota, they have these many things, and during the holiday season in particular, it's just a great event for families and kids. So keep that in mind as we move along. Something positive for our community, thank you. Okay, nothing else to come before the council today? Thank you very much. We will stand adjourned to our next council meeting, which is scheduled for Tuesday, September 23rd, 2025, here in the council chambers. Thank you, everybody. Have a great evening. Good night.